Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Viscar is absent. Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mann.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Viscar for good calls.
Second.
Okay, we move to item three, the invocation. And we are pleased to have Pastor Darrell Kelty with us from Community of Christ Church located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard. He will provide the invocation, and it's always great to have you with us.
It's always good to be up here. Let us pray. O our divine Creator, we thank you that we are able to meet together this evening to conduct the business of this, the City of Temple City. We do so in order that we might provide direction to this community so that it might become even a better community than it already is. We know that this will not be an easy task, but one considers all of the many problems and difficulties we face. So we recognize that it's not something we can do on our own without your divine support and guidance. It is for this reason that we offer to you this prayer this evening. May we, oh Lord, see the world around us and this community in your protector divine creation and for the care of us as caregivers. Therefore, let us be our prayer this evening. Through what we do here tonight, tomorrow, and in the days to come, we may make this a better community through your divine guidance. This we ask in all humility. Amen.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the freedom and justice of our own. We don't have any ceremonial matters this evening. We move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. And I believe we have Valerie Munoz is here with us. Nice to see you again, Valerie.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. My name is Valerie Munoz. I am mayor pro tem for the City of La Puente. But more importantly, I'm your representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, representing cities with non-pumping rights. I come today just, first of all, I presented you with an invitation. We are opening up for city council members who are interested in touring our water basins to see how our cleanup efforts is in the San Gabriel Valley. And I would be happy to schedule you at your convenience if this is something you're interested in doing. One of my responsibilities on this board was to make sure that I provide updates to our city council and also opportunities to really see what we do at the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. As chair of the Water Quality Authority, this district was created back in 1992 with plans to facilitate and provide funding for the cleanup of water in the San Gabriel Basin. The basin has a surface of 169 square miles, and it's estimated to store a capacity of 8.6 million acre feet of drinking water. This would serve approximately 1.4 million people in the San Gabriel Valley alone. Our agency is not a water provider. We don't sell water. Our whole goal is to clean up, provide federal and state funding so that we're able to then provide clean water and keep our water aquifers clean in our basin. The goal of the WQA is to hold responsible parties identified by the EPA and other agencies to secure the funding for cleanup efforts. And this also may include other prior defense industries that was in the area back in the early 70s, 80s, and so forth. Year to date, just this year alone, we've secured a little over $50 million in the combination of federal appropriations, Prop 1 grants, and Prop 68 grants. And again, this is our testament to making sure that we have clean water for our communities here in the San Gabriel Valley. We began to expand our outreach efforts to local elected officials and conducting information sessions. And also, like myself, coming to council meetings and just provide update. We also be more than happy to bring our directors to provide like a slideshow, an eight, 10-minute slideshow just to put out for your, during a council meeting. So on the invitation, it's my personal information and cellphone number. By all means, please have your city clerk or city manager, if you would like to set something like that up, I'd be more than happy to come out again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
May I?
Council, do you?
Quick question?
Sure.
Yeah. Now, Ms. Munoz, you said the WQA finds the funding for cleaning up or ensuring the quality of groundwater.
Yes.
Do you actually do the cleanup? Or are you just a funding agency?
No, we're a funding agency, and then we also set up the operable units. So, you know, we have the Almani, South Almani, Whittier-Narrow. So our goal is to secure the funding, secure the sites, and build the cleanup, and then also fund it to maintain them as well.
So you actually do do the cleaning yourself?
We do, yes. So we create the agencies, and then we work alongside like water purveyors, you know. So for example, in the City of La Puente, we have seven operable units in the San Gabriel Valley, and all of them are now up and running. And so we work with the water agencies in your local area. So they take over, we fund it, and then they provide the water to the communities. Yes.
Any other questions?
What is the difference between the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority and the San Gabriel Water Upper District? I know they're different agencies, but is there any overlap there?
We work alongside with them. Again, we were provided, we were set up by the California State Legislature. And so the sole purpose for us is to fund and fund the water for the cleanup efforts. But we work with the different agencies, with the water districts even, you know. So we all work in conjunction with each other and so forth, so, yes.
So they know what you're doing, you know what they're doing, all that.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then that flows down to the actual water purveyors, like?
Yeah, and the water masters and everything like that.
We have five companies in our city, and you guys would oversee that.
Yes, but we don't sell water.
Well, you don't sell water, I know that.
We don't sell water. We just help clean it. We help fund the cleanup efforts. And then the water companies are the ones who gain the clean water and all of that stuff, and then they can offer it. The thing that for us and how we kind of translate into the everyday resident is our goal is to ensure that we secure the funding. So these requirements for cleanup efforts aren't transitioned over to the ratepayers. You know, there's no rate hikes for cleanup efforts because our responsibility is to fund that.
So is your position on that? I'm so sorry, council, I'm gonna just go ahead and stop the discussion. It's just a public discuss, it's becoming more of a discussion. And maybe we can set up a time to have them actually present and allow the public to comment on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see. Jing, do you want to come on up?
Good evening, Mayor Sternquist and city council. My name is Jing Lee. I'm from the Temple City Library. I'm here to talk about our upcoming library programs. So we're very excited to announce our annual bookmark contest starting now. So children from kindergarten, I mean, young people from kindergarten up to 12th grades are invited to join us, celebrate the art, reading, and books by participate in the bookmark. So then they have a chance to have their design featured at our local library or even across the county. So they can either submit online through our website, or they can drop off at our library, or they can even mail to our library headquarter. So the deadline, the last day to submit is October 29. And another thing we are offering right now is we offer free state park pass. So currently, we have five passes, but we're gonna receive more in fall or maybe winter. There's no waiting list. So what the pass do is each adult, if you have a library card, you can get, you can check out the free state park pass for two weeks. So that will allow one vehicle up to nine people to visit the 200 participated California state parks. So if you want to do that, now, actually, before I came, I checked, there's no waiting list. Before, when they first launched it over the summer, there's a long waiting list. I think right now, people probably wouldn't get their passes. So you check it out, you can keep for two weeks, and you return. You can check it again. And I also wanted to remind everybody, September is a library card sign-up month. So I really encourage everybody to stop by the library to get a free library card so you can access all the wonderful resources we offer, books, DVDs, magazines, laptop, or hot spa, and museum passes, and state pass as well. And if you need more information, please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org, or you can give us a call at 626-285-2135.
Thank you. Thank you, Jing. Stephanie, if we could just go back, I'm sorry, I missed what you shared when Tom asked a question?
Oh, sure. So normally, for the public comment period on items that are not on the agenda, we kind of limit it to clarifying questions. So when we were asking the difference between or like what exactly they do, that was just clarifying the presentation. But then when we start asking in terms of goals and, you know, the conversation and the discussion starts growing, it really is an item that should be brought back, like she mentioned, like for a little presentation to allow. So I'm worried about the Brown Act aspect of it.
Okay, I think then maybe we need to revisit because it's been our practice.
I apologize.
No, no, I just, I think it's just important for us to clear that up because I think, I could see William's expression too, like, what just happened? So.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I mean, that's why, that's why she's here to remind us of those things. I do have a clarifying question, though.
Well, let me finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I just appreciate that because I kind of was like, okay, fine. But then I really didn't know what happened, so.
Yes, and to be fair, this is me getting to know your personalities and understanding how your council meetings work. So it might have been that another question would have been clarifying. I was just worried about the direction that we were going in.
And I understand that. I just think I need as the role of the chair to understand what happened.
Sure.
So anyway, and Valerie's been here in the past, and we probably have not done that. So I just wanted to be fair to her also that she understood, well, what the heck happened?
No, of course, and I'm happy to discuss it later.
So thank you. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Jing, can you come back up? I didn't really quite catch what you were saying you had available at the library.
The state? A hotspot, like, so basically, it's a hotspot.
Hotspot for the computer?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we have like a free.
I didn't, I thought you were saying hot pot. I thought, oh, they're selling food there now?
No, yeah, it's like, so people can check out the laptop, and they come with a hotspot. So they can take home.
You know what it is, it's these things too, you know? It's just.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm, thank you, I appreciate it. I just, and I didn't want to interrupt you, but that explains it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So by hotspot, I guess they can use their computer anywhere. Wow, that's nice.
Thank you, Jing. And Steve, you're gonna wait till agenda item five you put? Or did you want to go now?
Hallway.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna move to the consent calendar. As you know, all consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Okay, we move to item eight, public hearing. There is none, unfinished business, none. Ten, new business. Fiscal year 2021, 2022, fourth quarter financial status report. And we have our administrative services director with us. Welcome, Susan.
Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could give a brief introduction?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is the fourth quarter budget update. That represents the last quarter before the close of the fiscal year, so through June 30 of this year. If I can preface this report, there's some good news here. But that good news is really, I would describe it as one time for a couple key reasons. One, on the expenditure side, what you saw was not the use of resources because of, we were closer to an accumulative amount of the end of the pandemic. So our events weren't up and running fully. The use of our resources were not up and running fully. So that's one component. So we, the, a little over $2 million you see as a surplus is, I would describe as an anomaly, something that's not going to be repeated in the future. I don't, Susan, who serves as both your CFO and as the city treasurer, she'll be making some forecasts, but we do have general discussions. I don't tell her what to do in terms of those forecasts. But in our discussions, you will not be seeing this level of a surplus in our forecast models, for one. The other component of this is a reminder that this goes through June 30 of this year. So a couple key things that are not included in that. One is the salary adjustments we just made for our bargaining units. Two, we have to anticipate an escalation in costs with inflation with our contractors coming up. We can negotiate with our contractors, but we need, we can anticipate some levels of costs going up with our contract services, including the sheriff's department. This is a reminder that our sheriff's department increase for this fiscal year was one of the lowest two years in a row that we've had. We cannot anticipate that level of, that low level of cost increase being passed through from the county to us. On the revenue side, and Susan will talk about this very quickly too, I don't want to repeat over and over what we said before, but Susan and I would sit down during the beginning of the pandemic and say, my goodness, is the sky falling? Are we, are we in deep trouble? This really represents a boom right after things started to reopen again. So that will not last. And as our revenue numbers show, our restaurants really boom significantly. But that will eventually level off to historic standards at some point as well. They will not escalate at a rate that you're seeing here today. So I just want to leave the, I just want to make sure I leave the impression with you that, one, while we are happy to see the recovery and the robust recovery that we've seen, we should not, and nor will we, as staff, come back anticipating this level of surplus going forward. It is kind of a one-time, I mean, I use the word anomaly, probably maybe I could use a better word, but a one-time event right out of the post-recovery period that we are fortunate enough. And as I've described the staff in our staff meetings is that we are in a firm financial foundation. But that foundation is not gonna grow at the levels that are anticipated here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Susan.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members. So tonight, as the city managers mentioned, we are reviewing the fourth quarter financial status of the city. And tonight, we're recommending that the city council receive the fiscal year 2021, 2022, fourth quarter financial review and related reports, and also approve and authorize staff to revise the revenue and expenditure budgets as proposed for fiscal year 21, 22. Tonight, the overview, the presentation, as usual, I will go over a short, simple analysis, go over the general fund revenues and expenditures, the fund balance, a conclusion, and the outlook for the city. So for the analysis for the general fund overview, as the city manager mentioned, we do have a surplus, and I'll go into more additional details in the next slides. Our actual revenues was over the budgeted amount. So, and that's primarily to the higher revenue collections we receive in the various categories. Actual expenditures, again, we were under budget. So that's attributable to less events that we had. And part of our CIP budget was rolled over into this new fiscal year, 2022, 2023. Just a brief summary for the non-general fund, which is our special revenue funds, funds that have restricted expenditures. Again, they're also, the actual revenues are also over budget. And that's attributable to the higher sales tax allocations that we've received for like Prop A, gas tax, and those major things. We also had the lighting and landscape district, higher revenues for the ad valorem because of the property taxes. And also, the actual expenditures are under budget. And a majority of these are the CIP budgets you had approved in June that will be rolled over into fiscal year 2022, 23.
But Director Pargas, when you talk about rollover, those are not real savings. They're just accounting year, you know, it's not counting, accounted in this year, it's accounted for next year.
That's correct, council member. So what we're proposing is our budget amendments. For the general fund, the total proposed, we're requesting for revenues is $1,348,000 increase. And then on the expenditure side, a decrease of $594,705. So once these are approved, our estimated net operating surplus jumps to $2,869,000. However, when we apply the one-time expenditures, it reduces to $2,792,000 once the amendments are approved. And then the estimated general fund balance at year end would be just under $24.5 million. So the major revenues we're proposing budget amendments for the general fund are the building permits. The activities, as you know, in the city have soared. So we are requesting $157,490 increase. The court fines, which was, I guess, compared to last year, was unexpected. And so we're requesting an additional 100, almost $193,000.
Do we know why that was so?
I'm sorry?
Do we know why that happened?
I'm attributing it to the enforcement or normal enforcements that have come about throughout the city. For example, I mean, it's not related to temporary parking permits or parking permits, however, I think because the pandemic has subsided, more enforcement on parking or ticketing have come about. But the highest we've ever received for court fines was over $800,000, which I believe was back in 1718. So we're still not there at the highest level we've ever received. But we're almost there. The court fines we received in 21, 22 is comparable to fiscal year 18, 19 of almost $625,000. So that's before the pandemic. And then encroachment permit fees, again, it's related to the community development activities for buildings. Franchise fees, I'm attributing the increase in franchise fees due to the higher income of the franchisees. And therefore, our fees are based on their income. So we're, and also higher costs, probably that because of inflation. Property tax allocation, it's always increasing. The assessed valuation for the city has gone up. So every year, it's increasing. Recreation fees, this is the one revenue stream, major stream, that we're requesting a reduction of. As you know, we've had to cancel programming because of the spike in the COVID positive rates in fiscal year 21, 22. And lastly, the biggest spike we've had is sales tax. So we received $2.3 million in actual revenues when our sales tax budget was 1.8 million. Even some of the, our HDL or our third-party sales tax consultant did not provide or probably expect this 2.0, almost $2.4 million sales tax collection. And that could be a combination of the higher fuel tax or fuel rates and also some of the higher costs, possibly the businesses are passing on to their customers due to the inflation.
I do have a question, Mayor. So some of these adjustments that may seem very rosy and so forth, and oh, wow, we, the income is, well, obviously, these numbers are real. But would it be fair, or if I understand it correctly, to say these numbers in a good year would have been different anyway? Could it would happen, we would have estimated a higher income anyway? Because if my memory serves me right, last year, we had a smaller budget. I remember Mr. Coop was saying, well, I hate to present to you, but this is, we figured our year, this year's gonna be, we're gonna have a reduced income, and so we adjusted our expenses accordingly. So kind of like go to what you said. These numbers would have been higher had there been a normal year.
Possibly, yes. Yes, our SMS would have been higher.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Another way of looking at it is, could we have just been overly conservative with our numbers? And that's why we now see such an increase? And maybe that's why you gave your little speech before we started, that we shouldn't jump up and down for joy at this point?
Our job as staff is to make sure, and we present what we know as the kind of baseline conservative numbers on revenue projections. I'll give two examples. One, on the encroachment, excuse me, on the franchise fees, it's really hard for us to anticipate that level of growth because we take from the baseline before and put in a, I would say, a modest growth factor. What jumped out at us, I'll be honest, between us as staff, was the sales tax number. That 1.8 was getting closer to our historical standards, our historical highs. And we anticipated back to pre-pandemic level possibly in fiscal year 22, 23, this year, or even 23, 24. We did not expect our, to hit our historical highs in the course of this fiscal year. So the robustness of the recovery was a bit surprising to us. And the robustness of how we've hit our numbers in terms of building activity, which is reflected in encroachment permits and the building fees, did catch us a little bit by surprise. But the biggest one was the sales tax number. And so if you, for example, if you take a look at property tax allocation, we're pretty much within a reasonable range of what that number looked like. It was the cyclical parts of the economy that grew really substantially in that third and then really rose in that fourth quarter that was a great thing to have, right? Where it's great to have those revenue numbers come in. But those are the cyclical aspects of the economy, not the more static, longer term, like property tax and otherwise, is what really, really hit us on the general fund revenue side in a good way, in a positive.
So saying that, other than the sales tax jump, was there any other area that you were surprised about that the increase?
Not, honestly, not really. Franchise fee maybe slightly, but I wouldn't say that's a significant revenue source that would be surprising. You know, building permits and everything, those are also cyclical depending on what's happening in the economy. But those are nothing that like struck out as, okay. I mean, we were probably anticipating more on the sales tax side of a $100,000, $200,000 increase, not the 500, half a million dollar increase that we saw.
May I have another follow-up question?
Yes.
But as we know, we have witnessed real inflation. So if our merchants increase their prices of their, what they're selling, the sales tax would correspondingly go up as well, right?
That is a factor, and it'll be interesting to see what HDL kind of gives us because, and Susan takes HDL's number and slightly, you know, we go about, historically, she's gone 97% to 98% of what the sales tax estimate from HDL is. It'll be interesting to see when they come to us as staff and where they see the projections to be on the inflation side and what that means to our sales tax numbers as well. So it's a combination of those things that have factored into the growth rate that you've seen in the fourth quarter.
It would appear to me that across the board, and that's related to your question and answer, everything has gone up since the pandemic. So obviously, that's going to increase these numbers as well.
Absolutely.
And where that, if that's gonna continue, that's a good thing, but not, but that's also a bad thing for the consumer. Because what we were paying for a year or two ago is now Because what we were paying for a year or two ago is now twice as much as it is now.
And if I could add, that will level out for us as well. Because just as a reminder that on the expenditure side, this represents some of the pandemic activity or lack thereof activity that we saw on the expenditure side too. So our expenditures, that's why I say, that's why I prefaced it with the intro, that we can expect, you can expect in the mid-year budget and in the budget that we present to you for fiscal year 23, 24, for those expenditures to go up, of course, not at a corresponding rate, but at a rate that is much different than what you're seeing here. So that's why I wanted, that's why I describe it as an anomaly because we, we got the luxury of the revenue boost without seeing the corresponding expenditure boost as well. So that's why we'll, we'll take the great fortune that's here and be happy with it. And we can bank that. But in terms of looking at the five-year, and as Susan makes adjustments to her five-year forecast, that's why you won't see proportionally that kind of surplus going forward. If that makes sense. Thank you.
Of course, none of us have a crystal ball. Hopefully, we don't have another pandemic or other calamity that also has an effect on everything.
But you have a firm founded, we have a firm, what we can definitely say what this provides us with is a stronger foundation.
It's not an easy job to predict these kind of things, I'm sure. That's the difficulty.
So you'll see some, and as Susan moves to the next slide, you'll see some of the expenditure adjustments that are not going to be consistent going forward, or savings for lack of a better term.
One slide before that, this is just a chart, just to show you the changes that have happened in the categories. The blue bar is the proposed or the adopted budget. And the orange bar is what, where we are currently. And then the gray bar is once we apply the budget amendment. So you can see most of the categories are increasing. The Inlu VLF, that was my error, I duplicated another budget. So that's why we're asking to be, have that reduced. The numbers that you see corresponding on the chart is the difference between the adopted and the proposed budget. So you can see property tax from the initial adopted budget to the ending or proposed budget, it's an increase of over $227,000. Sales tax, we didn't make any changes during the year. But this, for this quarter, we are requesting that over $526,000. And you can see the only one that has a reduction is charges for services. And mainly, that comprises of the recreation fees of over $193,000 reduction. So that's just to show you what it looked like through the year. Now, on the expenditure side, you can see the law enforcement costs are down. And again, it's because of the less events we, we had in the city. And as Mr., the city manager mentioned, we can expect this to increase in the following years. Parks and Recreation Program.
Susan, can I stop you just for a second? Brian, this doesn't include the overtime that we spoke about?
No, that, 9:43, I'd have to see what account comes from, I don't think so, no. So that's not, that's not inclusive of the additional overtime that we spend for extra patrols, extra enforcement. It represents primarily a lot of the lack of events that we did over the, over the, over the course of the fiscal year. So it's not, it's not, it's not for, it's not for a lack of field personnel in the field during their, during their normal course of business.
So it's like the Camellia Festival, those two things?
Yeah, and there may be a few other things sprinkled in, but it's not like, you know, we utilized as much of the resources as, as the council allocated to us to do the, to do programming.
So on the Parks and Recreation Programming, these are basically the supplies and the meals or food that would have been spent on. However, we, as, as you know, we partially canceled our programs and events. So that's the savings of 198,160.
Can I ask a real quick question, Mayor? Do we still have the Senior Lunch Program? I haven't heard anything about that for a while. And is that included in this number?
It is, if it's included this line item, I'm not certain. But, but we are still doing the meals program. So there is delivery every Tuesday, congregate meals that are delivered every Tuesday. And there's about a third of the program participants that actually come to our facility to pick up those meals. So about two-thirds deliver, one-third pickup.
So is the meal program down or is it up or is it about the same?
From the, I believe it's consistent in terms of the level of participants that we have. I don't think it's grown, but I think from, from what, from what I recall from Mr. Matsumoto is that it's staying constant in terms of the actual numbers.
Is that going to transition to, back to having meals at the park?
I will have to talk to Mr. Matsumoto about when YWCA is looking to make that transition and if they are.
Was that cost higher?
Not significantly, but I mean, that would be something I would have to come back to with Mr. Matsumoto to talk to the council about. I don't think so because we already have program staff back at Live Oak Park. And so, and we are backfilled with all of recreation staff at this point. So I don't think it would be an additional cost per se, but it's something I talked to Adam about.
So can I also ask a question related to that? So when it says Parks and Recreation Programming, that's not inclusive of all programming?
I'm sorry, Mayor Portem?
It's kind of related to Tom's question because he asked if the Senior Lunch was part of it. So is that considered parts of Parks and Recreation Programming?
Clarification from Susan, I'll, I'll.
Yes, this is strictly from the Parks and Recreation Department budget. So that would entail if there is any savings from the Senior Lunch, it would be included. I, we don't have it broken down per account, so I don't know how much of this would be savings for, if any, from the Senior Lunch Program.
I would have to bet that most of this is for the, probably the less programs we offer to the community, youth programs, things like that, which we had to put a hold on.
Correct, classes, those kind of, those contract services, not contract services, those are a different line item, but.
Instructors.
Instructors, those kind of programming, which we are now ramping up again, not to belabor the point, but to my prior introduction, is that's why we have to anticipate as we, as we're fully ramping up for those expenditures to return.
Well, I would anticipate at the mid-year budget, that number's going to change.
Yep, it is. Susan, Susan will be working on that in the next few months.
And then again, the professional special contract services, just down about $52,000. Salaries and benefits, we do have salary savings, again, due to partial cancellation of the Parks and Rep programs. So we saved on part-time salaries. And then additionally, we also had salary savings due to the timing of the vacant positions and filling those positions. Utilities, this is one of the few areas we're requesting an increase for. It's higher rates and also the staff has been working 40 hours a week. So that increased also the needs or use of the utilities that I did not account for.
I suppose the EV charging also adds to that?
It does, but beginning October 1st, we will be recouping those costs.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I think Edison's rates has gone up.
Yes, they have gone up.
They call it time of use or something, but some euphemism of adding prices.
And I don't know about you, but I can't even understand my Edison bill anymore.
It's so complicated.
It used to just be just nice, simple. Now they got different rates at different times, different days.
Yeah, yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Indian costing you.
And then lastly, the major category of CIP, we are rolling again $200,000 for a project you guys have already approved in June. And the additional costs for Primrose Park are the costs that were not eligible for the arts in public places. So we couldn't use those funds as it didn't fit the requirements. And we are requesting a budget amendment for that. And here's a little chart again. The green is our adopted budget, orange is the current budget, and then the golden rod would be our proposed budget, once the amendments have been approved. And you can see the decreases. Community development is a little bit higher in that there are temporary help that we had. We also had design costs that were added, so those are one-time costs. And you can see the Parks and Recreation, and again, this is adoption, adopted budget versus proposed. So Parks and Recreation, you can see the, the reduction in the budget for almost $256,000 there. And then the fund balance for the general fund, as you know, we, we talk about general fund because this is our main operating fund. Our current budget right now reflects an estimated balance of almost $850,000. You can see under net fiscal year 21, 22 estimated balance. However, with the budget amendments that's proposed, with the $1.3 million revenue adjustment, a reduction in, of $450,000 in expenditures, we're looking at almost $1.8 million there. And then a reduction of the one-time expenditures, these were shares that we had budgeted for but did not purchase. And then again, the CIP budget. So in total, with everything, including the one-time and capital improvement budget, we are estimating a surplus of almost $2.8 million, at $2,792,588. And again, our estimated ending fund balance on June 30th is $24,481,000. So as far as conclusion, what are the major factors? Just to summarize, our actual budgets, our actual revenues are higher than our budget. So again, sales tax is higher and attributable to higher prices in fuel and goods. Strong restaurant performance, as the city manager mentioned. Property taxes, higher assessed valuation, we have hit over the $6 billion mark. We were initially at, sorry, let me pull up the number. Our August 2021 assessed valuation of the properties in the city was $5.79 billion. The latest report as of August 2022 has increased to $6 billion, $6.15 billion. So that's an increase of over $360 million in one year. So I expect our property tax revenues to also increase in the next couple of years.
So the property taxes, from what I know, they, obviously, everyone's property taxes can go up every year. What is it?
About 2% max.
2% max. Obviously, this is not just from that. Do we know that it, I mean, and I know it does go up when properties are sold.
Yes.
That's probably the most significant increase. Because then they go to the current market value. If those people have owned the property for a long time, that's a big chunk of change that comes into the county, okay? Do we know, or is that where, is that where it's coming from? Or do they break it down to even that or not?
I would have to look at the reports HDL sent to us or I can contact them directly.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, I mean, do we know how many properties are sold every year in Temple City?
We do.
Okay.
I just don't have the report.
So there's got to be some correlation, I think, to that probably. And as properties do sell, because I know in the past, a lot of people have, I hate to say it, have moved from Temple City because it's just getting too expensive. And they sell their property, they take the money and they get 10 times a property in another state or somewhere else. And that has a direct impact on our taxes.
Yes, I mean, you've seen the older homes being sold and being demolished and building a multimillion-dollar home.
Yeah, and then that's when the taxes go up.
That's when the, our property taxes go up.
HDL and the person who's in charge of that is Nicole Cohen. She meets with us in late fall, correct? So we'll have an idea about what the level of transactions were, the complete level. And that is public information as well. That's not, it's a little bit different than the sales tax information we receive, which is proprietary. But we'll, we have that. And when Ms. Cohen meets with us, we'll, we'll make sure to come back to you, especially in, particularly during the mid-year budget review as well and give you a sense of how that's looking.
And that's in April?
I think it's sometime in November.
Mid-year?
Mid-year.
It's July, I'm always.
So mid-year for, so just as a reminder, this, this represents stuff that's already happened, right? So this represents the fiscal year 21, 22. 22, 23, the current fiscal year, you know, that for mid-year adjustment would be this current fiscal year. So we will do that sometime, probably in early February is when we would come back for the mid-year adjustments because there'll be a few of the revenue sources that we regularly rely on and that Susan can make some reasonable assumptions about in terms of revenue growth and what that looks like. And then on, and also stuff that we can control a little bit better, our expenditure side, we'll have a better idea. But just, as just a reminder, this represents stuff that's already happened as of, as of June 30th. That's why we, we can come to you now with the fourth quarter budget report. Because while these are not audited numbers in terms of the fund balances or anything else, Susan has been quite excellent in kind of pegging down what that's going to look like.
So as mentioned, the property tax, franchise fees, our community development activities, then also the court fines are, have increased, which really helped provide the surplus of almost $2.8 million. On the, on the other side too, the expenditures also had reductions. And again, this is an anomaly and we would probably experience the full impact in this fiscal year or, and for sure in fiscal year 23, 24, as we get over the pandemic and its effects. So you can see the Parks and Recreation Program, the salaries and benefits and law enforcement. This, I'm going to estimate will be wiped out next year. Or we've budgeted fully next, this year already. So we won't see these savings this fiscal year 22, 23. So what's the outlook for the city? As the city manager said, it's a faster recovery than we've ever expected from the pandemic. We were initially thinking it would be like a U shape for us, but it's looking to be like a V shape. So our restaurants are really doing well. And again, we're, I'm not for sure exactly about the real cause, but we can attribute it to the higher prices, higher, we get sales tax off the fuel costs. So that's also a reason why our sales taxes are higher. Franchise fees, again, the activities of the franchisees are, the rates are higher, maybe additional customers. Transient occupancy tax was also unexpected, even though it's not a significant amount of increase. But nevertheless, it's higher than what we received last year.
Susan, tell me what that is again, it's like hotels?
This is the hotel tax. We, ours is 10%. So anytime someone rents a room from one of the hotels or the inns, there's a 10% charge. We see that almost everywhere in all the cities.
Who sets that rate?
We do, each city sets that rate.
I mean, any place I go, it's 18% or more.
Yes.
So how do we go about bringing our occupancy tax up to what the surrounding areas?
We would have to go up to the voters.
Oh, it's another.
Yes. We'd have to have the voters vote on it.
Whoa.
We did this in Azusa, so, which is why I know.
Okay.
What is it now?
10%.
10%.
It's like 19 to 20, something in some cities.
And then so I will be coming to you in one of the quarterly reviews for higher general fund revenues, which could include the sales tax, franchise fees, TOT. The parking permits definitely have helped in the surplus as we are enforcing parking. And then also the court fines. And then again, not to, to keep repeating myself, our property assessed valuation will continue to go up. I don't feel that we would be affected by the current market right now as, again, every time we sell a home, it's either demolished or, and you know, sold for a higher price. And as, as Councilmember Chavez said, when an old, older homeowner sells the home at current value, there's that change in the assessed valuation.
And another, another point to that also is with Prop 19 that was passed a couple of years ago, where a lot of children were taking the assessed value of the parent that's no longer available if it's not the primary residence and those children don't live there.
Yes. Yes.
So that's been an increase. I don't know how much in Temple City, but you gotta believe that there are some properties that have been affected that way as well. So there's another increase.
I'm just curious, could we ask Scott to just get us what those numbers are? I'm curious how many homes were sold in the past year and how many were demolished.
Charlie?
Any additional questions? So the final recommendation is to receive the 21, 22 fourth quarter financial review and related reports and approve the unauthorized staff to revise revenue expenditure budgets for fiscal year 21, 22.
Mayor, I have a question.
Questions?
Yeah, Susan, if, since we're talking about fourth quarter of the, of the last fiscal year, is it accurate to say that when we adopted the fiscal year 21, 22 budget, at that time, there were still a lot of unknown variables related to COVID? And hence, you had, I guess, added some conservative assumptions to your projections. I mean, we, we didn't know, I can't remember if it was the Delta variant and the Omicron variant. So we had all these uncertainties about, specifically our restaurants, right?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Protam. For example, the sales tax, uh, at third quarter last, well, it's really the, the first quarter of last year, which would have been January to March in the calendar year. Compared to the sales taxes we received in January to March of 2022, it was, uh, just for restaurants, it was an increase of 78,000, almost $78,000. So, um, at that time last year, um, our sales tax was lower. So that's the, those are the only numbers we can see. We didn't know when we were going to come out of the pandemic. We were thinking it would be longer term and slowly the businesses would come back. But, um, with these numbers we've received in fiscal year 21, or fourth quarter of 21, 22, it seems like they're recovering very quickly. And, you know, um, consumers are out there shopping and going out to restaurants. So again, it's, it could also be attributable to higher prices, so. And yes, there is a lag of information when we prepare our budgets. That's why we have a quarterly review. And in the first quarter, or January through March, we don't see those revenues until April, May, and June because there's a lag. So we, it's hard to, to estimate what it could actually be. We don't see the June 30th numbers when we prepare our next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Do, do we know what restaurants are doing well and which aren't?
That's confidential. We can't say.
Yes, we do.
Oh, casual.
We, so.
I'm not asking for it.
No, no, but you, you, um, we, we do provide the, in, uh, non-ranked order, um, the list of the top 25.
Yeah, we get that.
Yeah, you get that list from HDL. Right, and so, but yeah, we do have a sense, uh, if I was to generally categorize it, the Camellia Square area, the Temple City marketplace.
Well, Kmart used to be, I think, our biggest one for a long time.
Uh, it, it, yeah, it was for a long time. It fell off, uh, uh, when the pandemic hit.
Well, it fell off and that's why they're now closed.
If you think of our, for lack of a better term, I, I'm going to describe it, our foodie area of town has done really well and has come back significantly well in the last, uh, nine months or so. So if you're thinking Camellia Square, Temple City Marketplace, those areas have really, those restaurants which we all know and we all frequent have, have come back robustly.
Yeah, the Michelin star doesn't hurt.
Michelin star doesn't hurt, uh, Westway's, uh, recognition of Bistro Nah does not hurt. Bistro Nah is in one of our top 25 of sales tax revenue generators. So is King Haudang, um, as well. Grand Harbor is also one, in one of our top 25. So that can give you a, at least a flavor, for lack of a better term, uh, of what, what are, what, what those businesses are doing for our city.
So why, why is it confidential?
It is, it is, it is confidential under state law because, um, the information is proprietary to those individual businesses. So under, under a resolution that we had to sign, the city signed way back when, there's certain designated staff that can, that can see the actual sales receipts or it's aggregated. So we'll see exactly kind of dollar, what was remitted to the Board of Equalization for each of those individual businesses. But, um.
Yeah, but it doesn't take a genius to figure out, if we get the list of the top 25, we know.
It doesn't.
Who's making money, right?
Absolutely.
Obviously, the higher their, their taxes, the higher revenue.
Yeah, so yeah. But no, it's, it's, um, to, to your question, Mayor Protam, it's actually state law that, that states. And then, um, we're actually bound as staff to keep it confidential as well in terms of, and there could be potentially civil actions against us if we disclose that to another business. So like, say, from a economic development standpoint or other, we can't just say, hey, so-and-so is bringing in so much revenue, you're only bringing in so much. We, 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 we can't do that as staff.
So Brian, is there any way to get information about restaurants that are struggling? To see if there's something that possibly the city might be interested in?
I can, I can, I can, I can circle back with the city attorney's office and, and others. But I think generally in terms of their sales, I, I can't get, we, it's state law doesn't, doesn't allow it. But I can, again, I speak more generally than I can, than we, than we can specifically.
Have there been any businesses, besides our business, you know, loans that we gave? Any businesses recently, since we've come out of, or coming out of the pandemic, who have reached out to the city to see if there was any assistant programs available?
Not that I'd, I'd have to touch base with Mr. Reimers as well, but not that I've, that have reached out, at least to my office. But it doesn't mean that they're, they're not looking for some help or assistance. I think that, that, um, the COVID relief, uh, funding program really did provide some gap assistance during, during the heart of the, uh, pandemic response and the closures and the lockdowns. But nothing, nothing that I've seen yet, but I can, I can circle back with Mr. Reimers and ask him for sure.
Okay. I know the partnership was having some workshops in regards to, I forget what the title was, but something, the pandemic not really being over, but there are some programs in place. And, and I think if we can make those available to our businesses, it would be helpful.
Sure.
Not everybody is surviving and doing really well.
That, that, that is true. It's obviously unequal, but I, if we were to just generally categorize for most of our businesses that survived the pandemic.
Most of them are the restaurants.
Many are, many are doing extremely, uh, many are getting back to closer to pre, pre-pandemic levels.
I heard today on, on the news that there's almost $3 billion in unused gift cards that people have and that the millennials are the ones that are, millennials and Gen X are the ones that are really sort of hoarding them, if you will. They, they keep them, put them in a drawer, don't seem to spend them. And they said they'd really like, it would be helpful to see that money go back into the economy, which reminded me, I have about seven gift cards in a drawer that I should probably use.
I don't understand how that goes back in the economy because they're already paid for. So all you're doing is getting what you've already paid for. So they already have the money. They're not getting any more money unless you buy something more while you're there.
Right, I guess so that's probably what it is. Yeah, but that, that's a lot of money in gift cards sitting in drawers.
Well, I hate to say, but I have about $500 worth of gift cards.
See?
Well, you don't want, because I don't want, feel like going to a place and using it at this point. Yeah, all right. I, I hear what you're saying. It's true.
Okay, any other questions for, for Susan? Susan, anything else?
That is it, Mayor.
Actually, Mayor, one, one more question for, for the director. Looking forward, uh, one other major, since you mentioned property taxes and, and development permits, one, one other factor is rising interest rates and, and how that affects mortgages. So I, I know this is, again, fourth quarter of 21, 22, but looking forward, um, is there any, I guess, what's, what's sort of your take on how that impacts us?
Our, the interest rates are rising for investments. One of the higher rates I've seen right now is 4% for a two-year CD. So definitely, um, I'm looking to investing, but making sure it's safe in those, uh, CDs or other, you know, like, um, the, the US government bonds agencies. My take is it's going to be a while for inflation to be corralled, I guess. So those interest rates will probably continue to increase. A four-year and five-year, I think we can get for 5%. So I'm thinking, uh, and I, I don't, we don't have a lot in a five-year investment period, but if we can maybe get a 5% per year, including this year, um, that would really be, allow us to receive higher interest income. LEAF has, is now at 1.5. And it's, seems low compared to the other, um, investment mechanisms. But this is coming from like a 0.22% last year. So LEAF is, is slowly getting there. And what's, again, good about LEAF is it's, um, like, the liquidity of it, that we can put money in, take money out the next day. So, um, but on the long, longer-term investments, I can see the rates going up and possibly, um, investing a little bit more in those funds as things mature and we get rid of those, uh, investments that are earning less than 1%.
Yeah, and, no, thank you. And related to that, kind of how rising mortgage rates might affect, say, the housing market in terms of free development, would we be able to see whether that has any impact on the development side moving forward? Since that impacts permits, fees, as well as property taxes that we were talking about?
Um, it will definitely slow down, um, probably the transactions as far as foreclosures like we, um, experienced in 2008, 2009. I don't see that happening in the city as, um, a lot of the, the homeowners that we have here are, most likely had lower mortgage rates before everything skyrocketed or the rates increased. Yes, I, the only thing I can see here in the city is that the exchange or transactions slowing down or minimizing.
But I think that's why I was interested in seeing to William's question. If we are having homes demolished and then they're, they're rebuilt, they're selling at a much higher rate. So that would sort of, kind of maybe even out what the, um, potential is to lose revenue from high property tax. Because we're still, even though there might be fewer houses for sale, the ones that are for sale are going to be rebuilt, hopefully. And then that's going to be sold at a much higher rate.
And, and kind of related to that point, what, at least what I've anecdotally observed is that, as, as the market seems to have slowed down in terms of, they're not selling like hotcakes anymore. But you have some of these homes that were built and priced really high, but they're staying on the market for a long time. So this might be a silly question, but is the property tax assessment done after it's sold? Or after the construction is completed and reassessed?
After it's sold, when, when the actual sales has happened.
So if, if someone demoed the house, got a permit and rebuilt something that had a market value of 1.8 million, but it never sold, it would remain taxed at whatever the previous.
It would be reassessed.
No, they reassess for construction.
It would be reassessed.
It would be reassessed in construction, right?
Yeah, they would, they would, the moment, the moment you got, um, certificate of occupancy, then they would knock in your door.
Yeah, there's a number of reasons why your taxes go up. One is sale, one is new construction.
Right, okay. So it's the certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
And the permitting process. This, the assessor's office actually, I don't know if they've done it every year, but every couple of years, they actually come to our permit counter, sit, sit down and talk with our community development director and our permitting technician to kind of go through and see. And then they kind of ask, uh, how are things going? What's happening so that, because for the county, it's important, and for all of us, all the taxing agencies, it's important for them to know kind of what that trend is. Are they capturing all of that? Then they'll, they'll go through that with us. So I don't remember, I don't think since the pandemic, the assessor's office has been to City Hall representative. But that is, that is a, a frequent, has been a frequent, uh, visit from the assessor's office to our permit counter.
And you guys all know Jeffrey Prang, remember him?
Yeah.
He's the, your sister. And he, that's one of his priorities is to get these taxes reassessments and get them in.
He sends us emails regularly.
Yes, all the time.
Yeah.
But the interesting thing, as I know, I mentioned the Prop 19 reassessments, they're almost two years backlog on that.
Wow.
I don't know if they're ever going to catch up. So that, that's even more money that's still floating around out there, potentially that will come, hopefully. Wonder.
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, while ADUs are not very big in Temple City, but we are getting big. So in addition to houses getting demolished and new ones built, if somebody built an ADU, that would definitely increase the property va, value and reassessment as well.
Any?
No, I don't have any, no more questions.
Okay. All right. So we have a recommendation, if someone, if there are any other, um, we need to open up public comment. Is there anyone? Jerry?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jerry Janbazian. I have two questions and I'd just like to be enlightened by, uh, franchise fees. What, what is that? And then the second question would be, uh, is the, did the city receive any federal or state pandemic relief money? And is that reflected in the presentation tonight? So those are my two questions.
Susan?
The franchise fees are really, uh, more of fees to do business in the city. So for example, a lot of our franchise fees come from Edison, um, I believe Verizon, all those big, mostly utility companies, gas company also provides us franchise fees. So as their rates go up, and it's based on, on, again, their income, it's a percentage of their income. So as their income increases, then the franchise fees that we charge them also increases. That's what that is, mainly to do business in the city. We did receive federal funding, the ARPA funding. It's not part of this report as, as we, we received the money, the second half of the money in July of this year and the first half was last July. I didn't go into that as, uh, we're in the process of trying to determine what to use those funds for. So, but that is also available, almost $8.6 million to the city. But that is not part of the general fund balance. It's recorded in a separate, uh, special revenue fund.
And is there special meetings to decide how that money would be spent?
Yes, there will be.
And it would be public?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I believe we also have the coronavirus relief funds, CRF funds as well.
We had a CARE, CARES Act fund of about $443,000. So that one's already spent on a lot of, um, the law enforcement costs, COVID-19 supplies to mitigate, um, the, the virus. So that one's already spent and accounted for and reported on. It's the ARPA funding of $8.6 million that we have not spent.
And Jerry, um, we did use a small portion of that funding for the monument sign. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, closed public comment. Do we have any final questions from council members? Tom?
I don't, I don't have any questions, maybe just a quick comment. In listening to all this, it, it appears to me that it's kind of a catch-22 in that, you know, we've seen, as we all know, prices are going up, which of course have resulted, I think somewhat, in some of these increases that we are seeing. It's got to be, I mean, there's just, you know, I understand that people are going back to restaurants as probably never before, at least we haven't seen in a couple of years. But at the same time, I think we'll all, we can all agree that when you go to that restaurant, the price that you're paying for that dish is now a little bit more than what you were paying before. Or maybe even a lot more in some cases. So to me, that, to, to catch-22 for me is the, is the prices are going up, that's a great thing for the city. So my thinking is, okay, and again, this is for another day, I, I, I know. But should we start thinking, how do we return or what are we going to use? Well, how are we going to spend this money maybe as a return? Well, how are we going to spend this money maybe as a return to our community to offset what they've already been going through the last two years and what looks like they're going to have to go through at least for the next month, few months or whatever time it takes us to do recovery? So, you know, I mean, it, kind of to echo what Brian was saying earlier, this is a great thing for the city, but now obviously we can't count on it. It's going to happen all the time. But at the same time, we've gotten this gain. Now what can we do to improve our community with that? And again, I know that's for another day, but I'm sure we'll have that discussion at some point in time. So that, that's the way I look at it.
Okay, anyone else?
Just, just one quick comment, Mayor, if I may. I, I, I think that the surplus actually, while we, we feel that we're lucky to have surplus, but you know, it's not uncommon at all, actually, most of them municipalities, including our state. California has the largest surplus ever, al- almost hundred billion dollars. I think it's really, the reason is really between, the, the difference between more conservative estimates at the beginning of the, or during the pandemic, and then all the surplus money that came from federal government, other sources, and people start spending money and between all that, you know. So, so it's, it's lucky to have it, but we're not the only one.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to echo Councilmember Yu's point, I, I also think, well, first of all, I appreciate Director Paragras and staff. I, I think your approach throughout the budget amendment as well as the budget preparation process has always been consistent with sort of how we as a council looked at city finances, both revenue and expenditures. And that's kind of leaning towards the conservative side of things. And again, my, my question to you earlier was a bit rhetorical. I just want to make sure I wasn't saying the wrong thing. But at that time, there were a lot of unknowns. And so I, I think at least from my perspective, I could understand why we approached it that way and why we're seeing it reflected the way you're presenting it now. So, so all in all, I think it, it is a good thing. But like to some of the other comments tonight, I think it'll be interesting as we move forward, all these other variables that are kind of coming into play, how does that really impact, you know, the, the current fiscal year? And how, how does, how does that impact our current budget? And you throw in that eight million from the ARP, but I know it's not related to the general fund, but inevitably, any, any decisions we make from a policy standpoint on how to use those funds is going to intertwine and overlap with how we, how we budget for the, or how we use our general fund monies, right? So some programmings are not just, they're not mutually exclusive per se, right? So, so no, I, I think I appreciate the report. Thank you for the good work and I appreciate the council questions and looking forward to some of the follow-ups on the property developments. I'm kind of interested in that as well, just because it's kind of unusual. Like, I'll just give another anecdotal example. I, I have a neighbor who sold their property in November of 2020 and the new owner did not start building until a couple of months ago. So a lot of things like material prices, labor costs, inflation, all these kind of affected how people approach redevelopment. And like to Councilmember Yu's point, even ADUs, maybe ADUs ended up being sort of like the budget option as opposed to tearing down everything. It's like, okay, well, I could just convert my garage, right? Now that the state is allowing it, rather than, I don't have the money to tear down and rebuild everything from scratch because at one point wood was three times the price compared to pre-pandemic. So, so I, I, I think all in all, we're in a good, I appreciate the position we are in as a city, but I think we should still be cautiously optimistic moving forward.
May I, may I just make one more additional comment? I just want to underscore something you, you, you asked and also Councilmember Chavez asked about law enforcement. You know, the fact that we have money left in, in the budget. I mean, you made it very clear, it's because we're less, less event. But the, the one thing I want to underscore is that we have not reduced our law enforcement service. It's not because of that we were seeing a surplus there, it was only because there is a reduction in number of events.
Correct.
And to piggyback on that, I think it, I'd like just the council to think about possibly using some of that savings as we plan for this coming budget on how maybe we can enhance our public safety, maybe with more patrols using overtime, so.
And, and I agree with that and that's why I mentioned, it's time to start thinking about, okay, what can we do to return that to the betterment of the community?
And I think both you and I saw that at the neighborhood watch meeting, that that is foremost on our residents' minds right now. So we'll have that discussion sooner than later, right? Okay. If, if there's no other questions or comments, then may we get a motion, please?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we receive and file the fourth quarter fiscal year 2021, 2022 financial status reports and related reports and that we approve and authorize staff to revise revenue and expenditure budget estimates as indicated in Attachment A of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, any objection? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Can we have our update from our city manager, please?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. Just very briefly, just want to thank our partners, World Journal, for bringing back the fall, excuse me, High Autumn Festival. And hopefully next year, we'll be bringing that back to you with a little bit more activities and everything else. But thank you to them, thank you to Alan Liu and others who were instrumental on the World Journal's side that we deal with on a day-to-day basis as staff. They're great partners to work with, never have to worry about them, you know, bringing in extra safety equipment, lighting, anything else, anything we ask, they bring to the table. And it makes it for such an easier relationship in terms of providing those community events. So we really do appreciate them. Speaking of ramping back up again in terms of events, before the next council meeting, we will have the Fall Festival and Car Show on Saturday, October 1st from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, right here at Temple City Park. And for the next few additional Fridays, the first one was canceled because of the inclement weather, excuse me. We will be having movies at the park here at TC, at Temple City Park, starting approximately about 7:15, whenever dusk and whenever it goes down lower, right here, right here at Temple City Park.
Is that, is this the first time we're doing them here?
This is the first time we're doing them here, yes.
Where, here?
Yes.
Oh, we're not doing that level park?
No, we switched it to, we switched them to Temple City Park.
So the last week was here?
Last week was here, last week, and then the rest, for the rest of the, rest of the season, we'll be here as well.
Nice.
Can, can I ask a favor real quick on that note? I know that Adam has sent us the, originally sent us the schedule, but you, could you have him send us a reminder, maybe?
Sure.
Hey, we've got a, because last Friday, I was, Jane and I were sitting at home thinking, what should we do? And I completely forgot there was a movie at the park.
Until it said it was canceled.
No, 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 the one that wasn't canceled.
Okay.
So, yeah, because I, I forget.
Not a problem.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Actually, to, to echo that, some, I think sometimes we get events on our council calendar, sometimes we don't. So I don't think those are on our calendars.
I don't know about with you guys, but sometimes when I accept something, it disappears because I accepted it. I think I've told you that before, Brian, on the, there's a, there's a glitch on our iPhones or something.
And it doesn't show up.
It doesn't show up. And then unless you have written it down somewhere, it's gone.
Brian, before I forget, can I ask you to have Iliana put my SCAG and COG meetings on the calendar? They're, they're reoccurring and they should be on a general calendar at, but then she can send them to Outlook so I can accept.
Sure. No problem.
And sanitation also, please.
Sanitation as well. Next meeting is, our next council meeting is October 4th. And then our next meeting in October again will be consideration of the housing element as well. So October 4th meeting should be relatively light, but the second meeting in October should be a little bit more substantive as well. So we'll have a lot to talk about in October. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Mr. Cook a question? You, you mentioned the, the High Autumn Festival. Did, did we have any sort of closeout conversations with World Journal about how, how everything went? What was sort of their?
Mr. Matsumoto and the team will, will have a post-event and talk about things that we did well, things they need from us, things we need from them as well, in terms of what worked, what didn't work as well this time around. So yes, there will, will be that in, in an effort to, I'm going to assume, coming back to you next year, asking for authorization to do another High Autumn Festival next year and look for improvements in the programming and the event overall.
Okay, I think, I think that would be helpful just for us to understand that as well.
You know, it was such a lovely event. Is there any way that we can, when they come out and have that meeting, that we can actually get a date and have them come back to us? You know, instead of waiting six months from now and then hoping they're going to choose Temple City again to come back? But if we could have that discussion, you know, most of those events take a lot of planning anyway.
Not to get, not to belabor, but we'll probably be coming back with not just a one year, but they, before that, we had a multi-year agreement. We'll likely come back with a multi-year agreement with them. Is, that's, that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
It was nice to have Senator Rubio come out also and greet the, the people, so. All right, Stephanie, I am sorry, but I missed your last name.
Gutierrez.
Gutierrez.
Yes.
So we have Stephanie Gutierrez sitting in for Greg Murphy today, so I wanted the public to know.
Thank you.
Who you are and we welcome you.
Yes, thank you. This is my first meeting as assistant, so I'm happy to be here and happy to be working with you. You will have Greg back next meeting, but it was a pleasure being here tonight.
Well, you're always welcome back.
Thank you.
Now, you also serve on our, you're the city attorney for our planning commission.
I am, yes. So you'll see me there.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. All right, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings, do we have any?
I, I don't, Mayor, I don't have a report, but I would like to notify that we have set a school district standing committee meeting for the 29th.
And is that?
So if anybody has any items, you would want to get to, to Brian on that, to put on the agenda.
And that will be here?
I don't know, is it here?
Yeah.
And Tom, you're the liaison for that, right? Or William is, both of you? Oh, we have two, okay.
So it's, I think, believe at 5:30 on the 29th?
That's a Thursday, right?
Yeah, it's a Thursday, yeah, a week from this Thursday. Yeah, so look forward to that.
And so another one of us council members can't come to that meeting, right?
You can come, but I think you can only.
Come and sit in the audience?
You can't come as a council member.
Yeah, okay. It might be an interesting meeting to sit in the audience.
Yeah, might be, you never know. You're that awfully boring.
No, I, I saw Donna this evening and Georgino, who's on the school board, and she was very thrilled to know that we finally have a, a meeting set. So their, their school board members are looking forward to meeting with you both, so. Okay.
I think it's only been six or eight months since the last time we had one, maybe.
January or February.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we move to council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Do we have any of those? Tom?
Mayor, I'd just like to say a big thank you to Brian Arizumi and our sheriff's team members for our Neighborhood Watch last Thursday. It was an amazing event. I think people, I don't know if they were, they were in a hurry to get out and get tacos again or just actually come and listen to the great information that they say. But it, it was the biggest group, right, Jared, that we ever had, I believe? What was it, 120 at least, I think?
Somewhere in that range, sir.
Yeah, and it was packed and we ran out of food. But it was, I think, everybody, a lot of people stayed till the end and there were a lot of questions. And I think people were glad to see that come back. And so I know that we've already announced that we're going to have one more at Live Oak Park this year. And then next year, we'll get back to the regional ones.
Brian, you have that date for the second one?
It's October 20th.
20th?
Yeah.
And, and of course, the only criticism, not really a criticism, but a suggestion, we need to improve that sound system a little bit before the next meeting. I'm sure Brian was there also, so he heard it.
And thank you to our deputies, the whole team.
Yes, our team did a great job.
They really did.
And, yeah, it was, it was a good event and I'm glad to see it come back, so. And Miguel was there, Miguel, our taco guy, was there? You know how long we've been doing this? His son was about this tall. Now he's in college.
Yeah, it's crazy.
How time flies, right? Anyway, so thank you. And again, World Journal, a great event. Again, congratulations to Mayor Protem Man for his, his recognition in the fight against, hate against Asian-American or fight against that.
Yeah, very nice.
So congratulations again for that, well, well deserved. And, yeah, so it was, it was a good event and I think everyone there had a good time, so.
Okay, thank you. William?
Sure, thank, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo Councilmember Chavez's sentiments about the High Autumn Festival. I mean, we've worked with World Journal a couple of times now. So at, at least when I, I had a brief moment to speak with the president of World Journal, Catherine Yu, and just kind of like what Mr. Cook alluded to, I think they are interested in coming back next year. Before the pandemic, if you recall, we had, they essentially copied the footprint of the Camellia Festival, right? They had a road closure between Golden West and Kaufman, and this time they didn't. So at least she indicated they weren't sure what the, what the turnout would be because of the pandemic and whether people would be receptive to attending events or festivals with a lot of people. But I think the turnout was probably surpassed most people's expectations in, in terms of how many showed up. We got lucky with the weather. Actually, there's a, Vince might know this, I'm not going to try to say the Chinese saying, but there's, my parents keep saying, well, there's, there's something about, you know, the, the rain that's a symbol of good luck, you know, it brings prosperity, it brings good times. So in some weird auspicious way, it's, it's, that, that's kind of like what happened with, with our festival. Because if you recall, the prior weekend, it was in the hundreds, wasn't it? Yeah, so, so we got lucky. If, if we had that weather, I, I, I don't know, that, that turnout might have been, been dampened. So, so much appreciation to them as well as our Parks and Rec staff and, and our law enforcement folks for making sure that the event went smoothly. Secondly, I, I, I'm so sad I missed the Neighborhood Watch at a, at a conflict, but I'm glad to hear it turned out well and I'm definitely going to try to make the October one. That's all, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I echo my council members, it's been a great event, the, the Autumn Festival. And thank you to World Journal and obviously our great staff here, our law enforcement and everybody's out. I happen to be able to talk to quite a few visitors and it's amazing. There were people coming from San Diego just to be here and there were folks from West LA. And there were just also the Caucasian folks that just said, you know, they drove by and saw a bunch of people gathering and they stopped by and they said, man, this is good. They didn't know anything about Autumn Festival and they were not Asian either, but they, they just had a blast walking through this event, so it was great, we should repeat it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Just like to echo all the sentiments about the event, the Neighborhood Watch, I was just so, you know, thrilled to be able to finally attend one. In the past, they've always been on the evening that I was chairing the COG meetings. So I wasn't, I hadn't had the opportunity for three years when I was president to attend any of those. But it was really nice and I want to thank, besides all the deputies and Brian and everyone who came out, the staff, but the residents, because without our residents attending those meetings, the Neighborhood Watch program would not be effective. But the fact that people took the time to come out, I mean, yes, they have dinner, but I think there is a genuine concern about public safety in our city and to know that they're willing to come out and partner with our deputies to help make this even a safer community is really inspiring to see. And I think they will take that message back to their neighbors who did not come. Like, come to the next Neighborhood Watch meeting, see how you can help our deputies, partner with them. Because we all know, you know, the deputies cannot do this by themselves and keep our city as one of the safest in, in, you know, California. So I encourage everybody to come out, Live Oak Park, I believe it's 5:30. everybody to come out, Live Oak Park, I believe it's 5:30 for dinner, Brian, and that's on October 20th. And hopefully you'll see some of our council members. And we can have more than three, as long as someone's out and about, right, there?
Cause you're not together.
As long as we're not together, so. All right. But it would be nice if, if you could drop by and, and let the residents see you. I think that's it from me. Are there any, we have public comment? Are there any additional public comments? I know, Steve, you wanted to come up.
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Protemper Mann, city staff. I've got a problem I've been dealing with, with one of my neighbors for the last about six years. Sergeant Miranda had, had warned her about this. These people at 9655 Olive, I live at 96569 Dean Street. The people at 9655 Olive keep letting off explosives, firing guns. You know, I got a friend living with me, and he's sleeping upstairs. That's the back of the house. He gets the worst of it. I get it second worst. And I've called numerous times to the Sheriff's Department. Nothing seems to get done. It just seems to be a situation that won't get better. And one night, she let off some explosives, or, or her brothers did. I drove over there with my friend, and she followed me back to my house with a gun and told us that driveway that we were on, looking around, was private. It isn't. She takes upon herself to decide whose property is whose. And back behind my garage, the first 10 feet behind my garage is my property. And I need some help from the city to deal with these people that are at 9655. They've been a problem for the last 10 years. When my dad was alive, I came, came home to, to talk to them.
Steve, can I ask you to follow up with Mr. Cook on that issue? And maybe it's a law enforcement issue?
Yeah, it's happened where she's had parties, and, and twice, people from her party have been in my backyard.
Okay.
You know, enough's enough. And I need some help.
We can follow.
And I'd like to welcome our Assistant City Attorney, Stephanie, to staff.
Thank you, Steve. One last thing I wanted, I'm looking at the letter here that the council has signed, and it is a letter just expressing our concern and sympathy for the people in Taiwan who experienced the recent earthquake. So we're sending that, just knowing that we are in support of all those that are suffering, and we send our thoughts and well wishes. And I know you can't miss the Queen's funeral. Recently, it's been all over in the news. But I think anyone who has given their life to public service, even across the pond, deserves some recognition from us. And I'd like to adjourn in her memory. William? I'm sorry.
I think there might be someone else.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Come on up. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Thank you for letting me to, to speak. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members.
Thank you, William.
My name is Shan Zhang, and I'm one of the Board of Directors with the West Gilbert Board of St. Gabriel, 2022 Legislative Chair. On behalf of the West Gilbert Valley Realtors, we would like to invite you to attend our 2022 Local Candidates Forum. This event will take place at our headquarters at 1039 East Valley Boulevard, Suite 205, St. Gabriel, on Thursday, September 28th, which is next Thursday, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We would be honored to have you join us as our distinguished guest. Your constituents will have the opportunity to mingle with your, with you at the event, as well as others to, vice versa. We appreciate your consideration of this invitation and hope you can attend. Thank you.
Do you have a list of confirmed candidates that are attending?
I don't have it on me, but we seem like have 40 candidates will be attending.
Forty?
Yes. So.
For what?
For our local candidate forum. So this will be.
What are they running for? Candidates from different cities?
For, for all five of our cities. Monterey Park, Alhambra, Rosemeat, St. Gabriel, and Temple City is not, because we, we don't have elections. Rosemeat, we don't, but for so far, it's three cities.
I believe it's just for council election.
For a local candidate.
Local council election.
Correct.
So that, that would include like school board and school board candidates and all that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I participated in that maybe four years ago, I believe, and they had a really good turnout then. I think Nan was there also. I can't recall. But I remember being on the second story, right?
On the second story, yes.
Yes.
And I believe you said the date was?
Uh, September 28th.
Thursday, Thursday, 29th, which, which day? You said Wednesday, the 29th?
Next, oh, I'm so sorry. Wednesday, correct. You're correct.
Wednesday, 28th.
Wednesday, 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00.
Wednesday, 28th. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Which reminds me, I need to close public comment, and then we can adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
So is there anybody else? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.